Posted on the municipal bulletin board and website by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel Newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Tom, it should be, look on the, on the, on the dais to your right, yep, there should be a little black.
Looking for a switch.
Yeah. Sorry. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting, hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Committee man Ray is excused this evening, Ms. Dill is excused this evening, Mr. Hans is excused this evening, Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. O'Callaghan?
Here.
Mr. Sandow was excused this evening, Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Sandow? Oh, I'm so sorry. Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Richardson, we have a quorum.
Just for the record, that is the second in a row that she's done that.
One more strike and you're out.
I, clearly not.
Be careful, you got one more.
Chairman, it's Chairman Richardson. I don't, I don't know what my, yeah, anyway.
Thank you, okay. So we're right on to a review and approval of the March 12th, 2024 meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions, comments, suggested edits?
We only have a couple of people who could move and second it.
Yes, that's correct.
From county correctly.
Someone who was at the meeting, can they make a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Great.
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye. Approved. Thank you. Okay, we will move right into now a resolution. So this was the resolution for Jamie Cullen, Carolyn Benneby, application number 23-10P. This was distributed and we're looking for any last questions or comments to this resolution.
And just as a reminder, this is the property that was an adjustment of a lot line?
Correct.
Okay.
And maybe you could just highlight a couple of the adjustments that you made from the paragraph would be great.
My apologies that I don't have the redlined version.
Do you recall, I recall there was a request to kind of separate out some of the 1994, the historical related issues with the prior resolution and then make it more clear with regards to what the new modified resolution memorializes.
Hopefully we captured that in the whereas paragraphs on page two going forth, going, explaining the condition and the request to modify it. And then in the decision section, we broke up between the minor subdivision approval and the modification of the condition laid out first on page five, the law authorizing the board to have the discretion to make such modifications. Then on page six, laying out the analysis by the board, the intent, interpreting the intent of the condition, not necessarily to prohibit any future subdivision whatsoever, but those focused on offending the purposes of the zone, which was interpreted to be still providing for one acre single family lots and not to have further subdivisions of buildable lots. This being just, the proposal was just a lot line adjustment, not the creation of a conditional lot. Next paragraph, 19 analyzes that and hopefully clarifies that distinction between what the board interpreted the restrictive provision to be intended to do and what was being done that did not violate that intent by virtue of the proposal of the applicant. And then also a finding by the board that even irrespective of the intent, there was a better planning alternative to make the two lots more regular quote unquote in shape than the somewhat odd configuration that previously existed. And then same with the conditions of approval, the, there's a new condition, or I should say a modified condition in a deed restriction, which indicates that further proposed subdivisions that are minor subdivisions and are solely for the purpose of adjusting a common lot line, i.e. not creating a new lot, but simply changing the configuration of the existing lots, that's permitted so as to memorialize for all future owners entitled, and for that matter, anyone who reads it, what the actual intent of the restriction was and what it was not. To make it a little easier, should somebody else come in in the future and want to adjust that common lot line again.
Okay.
I doubt it would happen, but never know.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And, and you have the, going back to who's eligible to vote based on the decision, I think it was unanimous.
Everyone here, yep.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Committee man Ray was not eligible, so everyone else that's here is eligible. So Deputy Mayor, you were, the motion correct? And the second was Ms. Vice Chairman Jones, okay. Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right, it is now time to move to our application this evening. If the applicants could come forward.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, while counsel is approaching, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mailed and published both on March 28th, which date is at least 10 days prior to this evening's hearing date. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application. And back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. I'll just announce that this is for a minor subdivision, a lot line adjustment for block 13101, lots 15, 44, and 50. The address is at 20 and 32 Pine Street with lot 15 that has no address. This is for application number 25-05P. Take it away. Thank you. Are we on? Yes, that was.
I don't think I turned the portabook one on yet, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post-Palik, on behalf of the applicant's Fauzerrano Family Trust, Peter A. Fauzerrano and Lori Ann Rosmerewski. As indicated, this is for 30 and 22 Pine Street in Sterling, as well as lot 15, which is the time, tax block 13101. Lot 15 is owned by the Fauzerrano Family Trust. It is located in the R2 zone. It is a landlocked parcel. Lot 44 is owned by Peter Fauzerrano, located in the R4 zone, that's known as 20 Pine Street. Lot 50 is owned by Lori Ann Rosmerewski, also in the R4 zone, known as 32 Pine Street. This is an application for a minor subdivision, but rather than going from one to two or two to three, we're going from three to two, going backwards. But we're doing something that most, I think we'll all agree is, from a planning perspective, a good thing. We're eliminating a landlocked parcel, namely lot 15, dividing it, not evenly, but dividing it, and merging it with lots 44 and 50, giving each of those lots greater depth. There is currently a private 50-foot wide easement along the southwesterly sideline of lot 50, but the property is undeveloped, save for a detached masonry, masonry garage the family refers to as a shanty, which is in the northeast corner of the lot. That will remain in place, but be part of proposed lot 50.01. These lots have been owned by members of the Fauzerrano family for many years. They remain so today, as you could hear from the opening. Ms. Rosmerewski is a family member as well. And like many lots in the township, 44 and 50 are comprised of former picnic lots dating back to the early 1900s, in fact, 1923 specifically, so just over 100 years old. Board professionals have raised an issue that we're going to address almost in total, I think. There are two sheds on the property, one on lot 44, which is a little bit too close to the sideline. It should be 10 feet off. It's at 8.9. The applicants will stipulate to a condition of approval, if this is approved, to relocate that shed at least 10 feet off the line. There is also a shed on lot 50 at the end of the driveway, if you're looking at the plan. The issue with that one is it's 149 square feet. Under your ordinance, anything over 100 square feet would require variance relief. I'm going to, at some point, hopefully tap Ms. Coons, as whether had a zoning officer, to explain that the construction code that this is designed to parallel has actually changed. So now it's 200 square feet, that's kind of the pivotal dimension. The zoning ordinance has not been changed to still correspond with that. My understanding from Ms. Coons, the township is not enforcing anything if it's below 200. But if the board should determine, just as a matter of caution, that a variance would be appropriate, well, we have no issue with that and we would ask that the board do that if they feel it's appropriate. Just as a housekeeping matter, the photographs that have been provided were taken by myself shortly before the application is filed. They accurately portrayed what's shown in them at the time, they still do. And two people with me this evening, Kristen Weber, who's very shy and does not want to, and I promised her I would do my best to keep her from speaking, but I am going to ask that she be placed under oath in case you come up with a question that Mr. Hollows and I can't answer. And then Mr. Hollows will be our star witness, who's our engineer.
Great, thank you. Would you like to qualify?
Certainly happy to swear both witnesses in, as well as our board professionals. If you'll all raise your right hand, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, all four of you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hollows, I believe you've been in front of this board a few times before?
I have. Your license still, and standing as a professional engineer in New Jersey. It is.
Ask that Mr. Hollows be again qualified as an engineer.
Any objections?
No objections.
Great, proceed.
Hollows, did you design the subdivision plan for this application?
That's correct.
You start by showing us existing conditions and then take us to your plan.
Well, the property, as Mr. Zelli had indicated, is off of High Street, it's on Pine Street. Pine Street is a dead end street and it's the three lots on the left side, if you were to go up Pine Street. And existing conditions.
Just for the record, Mr. Hollows, can you give the last revised date of the plans that you're referring to?
They're dated February 12th, 2024. There is no revision date.
12, 24, oh, here we go. Yep, okay. And it's the three sheet set that you submitted more than 10 days in advance of this evening, correct?
That's correct.
And it's not changed or handwritten on or colorized?
I do have a colorized drawing, but.
When we get there, we'll mark it Exhibit A1.
Sure.
But so far, we're good. If you could just refer to the sheet pages as you go.
I'm, I'm looking at Sheet 2, which we call existing conditions. It's a little bit larger than the area map. It's got Pine Street is on your right and the subject property is on the left. And you've got lot 44, the one-story framed dwelling, paved driveway, and the shed that Mr. Zelli had indicated, that's 8.9 feet off the property line. To the north of that is another house on Pine Street. This is lot 50. And again, this one's improved with a one-story framed dwelling, it's got a paved drive. And then the landlocked piece of property, it's technically not landlocked, there's an easement across lot 50 that gave access to this property, but there is no street access other than through this property, through this lot. And that's a larger piece, that's lot 15. And it has the, the masonry building, I, in my drawing, we call it a garage, but it's a masonry building in the northeast corner of the property. And then there's another small shed there. This is the, masonry building is the building that is 149 square feet in the area.
That would be the shed by the driveway.
This guy, okay.
Just for the record, there is no driveway or any facility like that leading towards our masonry garage, it's just.
That's correct, yeah.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but if you can give us the approximate square footage with help if you need it of the masonry building?
20 by 20, so it's 400 square feet. By the, yeah, I think I have the right scale.
This is a test.
You get three tries.
I can't do it in my head anymore. It's a little, between 400 and 500 square feet.
Great.
What are we proposing?
We are proposing, and that's where I go to the colorized drawing, but it is the same drawing that you have. It is.
Sheet 3?
I'm sorry, back to that Masonite building, which I can still see on this drawing here.
Yes.
Is that the one that we're asking for a condition? Is that the building?
It is not. Mr. Hollows is pointing down.
The, the other one on the back end of the property that's just kind of in the lawn, that's the one that's like 150 square feet?
No, so the one, back in the lawn, there's no relief being requested, or as far as I know, required.
Okay.
That is the masonry garage that's been there for.
Okay.
Nothing leading up to it. The one in question, Bill, can you just point to the one at the end of 50's, no, up?
No.
There. That one is approximately 149 square feet. So that's what I was referring to. Under the old ordinance, we definitely need a variance. Under the old ordinance that we still have, we really do, it's just from an enforcement perspective, kind of moot point, but if anything, that would be a technical variance.
Okay, just point of clarity. We were both talking about the same thing.
Yep.
We're on the same page.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there's a zone line boundary in here too, and then this is the larger zone, the R4, and then this is the R2 zone. And as far as the buildings go and lot width and everything, they all comply with the ordinance as it is right now, except for the sheds.
And this one, that's colorized, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we, talk about technical variances, technical exhibits. Why don't we mark that A1 since it's changed? It was Sheet 2 of 3, I guess, the existing conditions, but with colorization, it's A1?
I think this is Sheet 3.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're up to 3?
Sheet 3 of 3.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Just confirm the two zones. Lot 15, 15 is in the R2.
Yes.
You just said that one.
Yes. What we're proposing to do is eliminate the lot line, be the easterly lot line of lot 15, which virtually eliminates lot 15, and put a new lot line. It's just the extension of the existing lot line, that's between the two lots 44 and 50. And then they would just have that additional area in them. And the lot 40, 44.01 would have 1.136 acres, 49,470 square feet. And lot 50.01 would be 2.02 acres at 88,370 square feet. Again, this, there is no violations with any of the setbacks with this change in the lot line.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the, the, am I correct that there, the lot, other than the 8.9 versus 10-foot shed setback and the 149-square-foot shed, there were no nonconformities prior to the proposed lot subdivision? And there would be no additional nonconformities as a result of the subdivision?
That's correct.
Nothing existing, nothing being created.
Okay, yeah. Not, okay. Or exacerbated for that matter, just simply the, the two that previously existed would still exist, but you've already offered to eliminate one, being the 8.9 versus 10-foot setback to a conforming location, correct?
And other than that, no physical work is being proposed? This is purely a paper application?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if the board were to approve it, this would be recorded, deeds would be recorded in the Morris County Clerk's office for the, the new lots.
Would anything have to be done to remove the easement? Or does that stay with the property?
It has to be terminated.
Well, let's, if we could, could, maybe, yeah, could we, yeah, we'll part, let's, let's have the board professionals, I know there were some comments and some of the review that they've done.
Okay.
Liz, do you want to go first?
Okay, I have a review letter dated April 5th, 2024. I noted the two existing nonconformities regarding the sheds. I have my plan and review comments, the first one is regarding, you know, we don't like to have split zoned lots and, you know, it's not ideal. And so I asked if, if the applicant would be willing to, you know, obviously, we can't compel the township committee to rezone it to all R4, but if we could request that the applicant request.
And we have no objection to that, to, to our.
To make a request.
Being required to make a request.
Yes.
That would be the extent of the condition, as Ms. Lanning said, if they deny it, we don't have any control over that.
If I may ask a question on that.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, Liz, would it be your opinion that in order to eliminate what would be the creation of the two split zone lots, they should both be designated R4? Or simply they should both be designated the same zone, i.e. potentially R2 for both lots?
I would recommend R4, and simply because the improvements, the bulk of the improvements are in the existing R4 and the surrounding properties and fronting on Pine, and the adjacent roadways are also in the R4. So I, I think personally it makes more sense to make them all.
Agreed.
All R4.
And, and that request would be, just to get the parameters so that it can be objectively measured and monitored, that request of the township committee would be in writing, correct?
Correct.
And, I mean, it's the pleasure of the, the board, but would it be a one-time request? Would it be a multiple-time request, an ongoing request? Not that anybody should be pestering the governing body, but, in my opinion, but, but what is the, so that we can make sure it happens? One, one time?
Based upon our experience, actually recently with the Parisee application, we sent in one letter, they jumped right on it, scheduled us for hearing immediately. This one, I don't even know if they'll necessarily require an appearance, but will certainly volunteer to give one if they need it.
Okay, so one-time written request would, would do the trick. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
On a question with regards to making it R4 as opposed to R2, is there anything that in the R2 zone or the R4 zone that would conflict each other?
They do have slightly different standards, but as I said, the improvements currently are all in the R4, you know, the houses and the driveways are all currently in the R4. And they, actually, because Steve, I think, alluded to this before, they actually both lots meet the requirements of both zones.
Liz?
Yes.
So I'm just looking at a zoning map. It looks like the properties behind this on Long Hill Road are, are R2.
Correct.
And the ones on High Street and Pine Street are R4.
Right.
And so since these are being associated with the ones on High Street and Pine Street, they should be R4.
That's what I think, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
But, but to answer your que, if they were R2, they actually would still be conforming.
Okay.
Then the second point I had in my letter is regarding, there's a wire fence in the northeast portion of proposed lot 50.01 and extends into the neighboring lot, which is not part of the application. And we just, we're curious about what the situation was.
We would prefer to not have that addressed, the neighbors, been that way for years, there's no dispute or anything between the neighbors about it. If new neighbors were to come in and have an issue with, they certainly have full enforcement powers through the township. I don't think it's something the board needs to address. We'd ask that it just honestly be left alone.
Could we at least point it out on your figure as to where this fence is located?
It's, it's right behind the house.
Okay. Along, on that property, it goes, extends across that property line from?
Yes, it does. There's a little triangle.
What is that, a fence? What is that?
Yes, this is a wire fence.
It's a wire fence, okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just curious to, not to beat a dead fence, but the, that lot, what, what's the size of the lot? Is it a single-family dwelling? Is it anywhere near the, the fence? And if all those questions are not important, my apologies.
The question was the fence.
Oh, it's the far rear.
Long Hill Road is near that lot.
I see, the far, yeah, okay.
The fence would be down in this, this corner, and then the house is up on Long Hill Road.
Those houses are significantly higher.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a lot of wooded, unimproved.
Very steep, critical slope there.
Yeah, not, not in the middle of somebody's flat backyard.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's where they say good fences make good neighbors.
Yes.
Even if they're a little off.
That's the extent of my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Liz.
Mr. Engineer? Your turn.
Comments in my letter, very straightforward, some minor revision stipulations. Do you have any objections to any of them?
No, I don't.
Okay. Then I won't steal your thunder, I'll turn it over to our vice chairman for his question instead of asking.
Joe, I'm sorry, we can't, I can't hear more of your sound.
Just, turning it over, turning the easement over to our vice chairman and not to steal his thunder.
But just prior to that, just if you could just repeat, so you had, there's stipulations.
There's a couple of stipulations in my letter and minor revisions to the plan, changes to the certification for the boundary and providing meets and bounds for review prior to filing.
So just for the record.
They're all stipulated.
Yes, 2.1 through 2.6 and 3.1 are all stipulated too, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board for questions. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So with regards to the easement that's currently on the, which lot is that? The top one there?
50.
Thank you.
50-foot easement.
Yeah, that one, at the top of Pine Street. What happens to the easement? Does that now go away? Does it stay with the property? Because you're basically extending the property back and it's now one big property.
As a practical matter, it would be, I'm sorry, it's more of a legal question, so I'll answer it. It really becomes a moot point because the owner now of 50.01 would have access to the back, back area, which is the point of it. But to really clarify it, we can certainly put something in the subdivision deed vacating it, just so there's something of record for any title search or down the road.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And it was, it was private?
Private.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a public road or anything like that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Just a question with the larger garage, and I see there's a concrete well in the backyards also. Is there any utilities servicing the garage? Power, are there lights in that larger garage?
But along, along the lines of what you had seen too with that well, is that well
operating? Is it used for irrigation? Is it defunct? Is, is there's a well indicated on the survey drawing?
I don't have an answer, we, we don't know that.
Okay.
Is there any reason to think though that if there are any utilities like that, that they would be anywhere other than in 50.01?
That was the next question, where did they come from?
Yeah, I think realistically, the age of this.
Yeah, I think realistically, the age of this building, I don't think they would put it underground, I think you would probably have a hole somewhere or to a tree, so it wasn't visible at the time of doing the survey work, so it wasn't located.
Can you, would you stipulate that the shanty, as you called it, would not be used for a residence, as a residence? Okay.
And no, no kitchen facilities and/or bathroom facilities located therein and will not be?
We'll stipulate that there are no such amenities and will not be.
Thank you.
Is it a hazard? Is that Masonite Building a hazard?
It's not falling down.
Yeah, it's just a Masonite.
Probably not.
Okay, still sound, structurally sound?
It's fairly prominent in the photographs.
Yeah.
You're going to make me look.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. I'd like to open it up to any public, but I think the only public right now, there was a gentleman here, seems to have left. So seeing none, I think we can move on.
No other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
Summation?
It's pretty much as of right unless the board decides that the second shed should have a variance to be saved.
And again, just to.
I would argue hardship on that because it's been a lawful.
And again, just to confirm, there are no future plans to do any development toward the back portion of this property, it's pretty much to leave it as is, as the intent.
That's certainly the plan now, if any future owner or current owner would want to change that later, obviously, they would have to comply with the zoning requirements or come back to what.
And they'd, I would assume, and Liz can weigh in perhaps as well, that they, at a minimum, they'd have to get a Section 35, 36 MLUL, a planning variance, because they would not, if they were going to do anything in the back there.
What is this line?
It'd either not be on a lot not abutting in the street, or for that matter, if it's one of these two lots, they'd be, boy, I just lost my train of thought.
Well, if you were to re-subdivide it in the future, you would need, you would need to get, in order to build anything back there.
Any subdivision.
Yes, you would, you would need to get variance for that.
Make now, more narrow, long lots, or what have you.
Right.
The bowling alley lots, as they sometimes refer to.
What I would suggest, and maybe this is a legal question as well, is that the applicant requests, just as a matter of record-keeping, the variance for the shed, and just with the idea that, okay, that, you know, that just so it's in the.
My view on technical variances, that's like, you know, close-only counts and whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, variance is a variance, whether it's technical or not technical.
So at least there's a record if the board is.
Prudence dictates that the board consider it and reflect it, yeah. Okay.
I could argue that the hardship is that somebody hasn't gotten around to changing the zoning ordinance, to comply with the instructions.
Well, would you like me to opine as the zoning officer momentarily?
If you would like to, to be on record.
Or simply concur, if you agree with what the representation from council was.
I do to a point. Historically in Long Hill, what we've done, if the applicant has come to the board for some.
You know what? Please raise your right hand. If you swear to God or affirm the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed, zoning officer Deborah Kuntz.
Currently testifying as Deborah Kuntz, zoning officer versus board secretary. Okay. So the use, the original, from my understanding, the original ordinance was written with that 100-square-foot number for sheds, because that was what the UCC Uniform Construction Code used to be, that meant any shed over 100 square feet, you needed construction permits in addition to zoning. The UCC raised that to 200 square feet, but our code did not change. So what we generally do in the zoning office in construction, if people are coming in for a shed, if it's over 200 square feet, they can have their shed without a variance, they just get permits, construction permits in addition. However, if there's existing structures that don't meet the code, historically, the boards have given variances for those structures. So because it is existing, the code still says 100 feet, if they're here for other, I would say give the variance for that as well.
Technical variance.
Technical variance.
But that would come under the zoning.
Correct.
All right. Okay. Great. All right.
I have nothing to add, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate the positive.
Could you give us a quick summation of what the resolution concepts would be, and we'll move to motion?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, it would be a minor subdivision approval for, in essence, a lot merger from three to two. The one variance would be for a 149-square-foot shed as opposed to a 100 maximum permitted square-foot shed on what would be proposed Lot 50.01. The 8.9-foot setback is being eliminated, which perhaps the board would consider a benefit, as would the landlocked lot that does not abut a street. But we are creating two split-zoned lots, but the conditions of approval include the obligation of the applicant to request that the township committee consider rezoning what would at that point, I guess, be the rear portion of both Lots 40.01, 44.01 and Lot 50.01, the former Lot 15 landlocked lot, so that both those lots would go back to being R4-zoned in their entirety. The 550, I'm sorry, the approximately 500-square-foot detached masonry, masonry building that would be on proposed Lot 50.01 would not be for livable floor area, would not have any kitchen and/or bathroom facilities. The, all the comments set forth in both the planner's April 5th report and the engineer's April 9th report would be stipulated to, and bear with me, the offending 8.9-foot off the setback line shed will be relocated to the conforming location, at least 10 feet from the setback line. And the easement, existing easement on what would become proposed Lot 50.01 will be vacated. Same can be done in the minor subdivision deed or deeds. That will be recorded with the county clerk's office after review by the planning board and/or township attorney and our township engineer for meets and bounds. And what did I miss? No? We got it.
Just a point of clarity.
Any further questions, clarification?
Yeah, just a point of clarity. The, you mentioned township committee and rezoning, is it the township committee that passes that?
Yes, only, yes, we are the guardians of the master plan. They are, for lack of a better term, the guardians of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
But there is a recommendation on the master plan to remove split, split-zone lots.
Yes.
So it's consistent.
That's right, if it, yeah, if it comes our way, I suspect we know how the.
I knew I read that somewhere.
Master plan consistency determination will come out.
Or as we say, not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for this resolution? Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Okay, the only thing we have remaining this evening was just to review a little bit old and new business. The first is just a quick update on some of the committee activities. I believe, Mr. Jones, you have an update with regards to some of the open space related.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I did meet with the open space committee, I guess it was about two Mondays ago, and we talked about several properties and what we would like to see at those properties. Also in attendance was the rec director and also commitman Burelza. Daniel Rogers was present, and several other members were present from the open space, as well as myself. We talked about various properties, what could we do with those properties that the town has on its Rossi. We focused in on the two greenways, the Passaic Greenway, as well as the Central Park Greenway, talking about looking at creating trails, whether it could be contiguous trails or are they just portions of trails? Because if anyone saw the rain that we've had the last couple of days, the ball fields were underwater all along the Passaic, the banks were overflown, so there's a lot to assess there, but we were definitely looking at, what could we do with that? The beauty with living next to the swamp is they've been doing a lot of work with upgrading their trail systems and putting decks and platforms and a lot of, is it ADA-accessible trails? So there was a suggestion made by the group that we should be talking to them about how can we leverage that, what, you know, what are the obstacles that they see? Because we're going to be going, our trail systems are going to go over wetlands, so what can we do? We may have to go around it, we may have to deviate, even when we do the, and Tom, I'd like to talk to you about trails, what can we do in those spaces? So really good meeting, very productive. It seemed like everybody's walking away with a little more energy and taking on some work that needs to be done.
Great, thank you, Tom.
So, good job.
No, and I appreciate that, and that's exactly in line with, you know, really our goal this year, which is to do a better job of taking the master plan that we worked so hard on and bringing that now down to the different committees that are involved with the township. So we're going to be looking for opportunities to do that with each of the standing committees and creating better liaison so some of these projects can come up from the grassroots. So, thank you, Tom, for taking that on.
Thanks for pointing out the fact that, yeah, I was there to speak about the master plan and making sure that, you know, we are consistent with what the master plan has laid out as a plan and how to take on these, these projects.
Right.
So, thank you.
And then while you have the stage, just ordinance committee, I know our key goal right now is to update the existing, really, zoning map first and foremost.
Yes.
As well as other maps, but the zoning map being probably the first and foremost, so it's about prioritizing and getting the resources necessary together to update that.
Yeah, the zoning map is definitely going to be the bedrock for how we move forward, and there's going to be overlays of other maps that will come on top of that, so definitely look forward to working with Joe on obtaining that. Also, with regards to the ordinance committee, I will be sending out an email to both Dave and Teresa, who are not here today, to kind of lay out all the recommendations, and there's, I have over 286 line items here, but recommendations from the master plan and how we're going to try incorporate those into the ordinance. It's a big book of work, but I've got it laid out in a spreadsheet, so this way we can start putting together a gameful attack.
And perhaps by the next meeting, if possible, we could begin to set suggested priorities.
I will bring a list.
Because that's too much to, too much to tackle all at once.
Thank you.
Good. Any other updates from any other committees at this point?
We're just, with the site plan review committee, we're kind of in a different boat where we can't go out and recruit people to come to us, so we're kind of in a waiting, holding pattern. We have spoken with Deb, and our plan is to just keep in contact with her. If anybody steps forward, we will schedule meetings and.
Great.
Work with them to see what we can get done.
Fantastic.
That would be, you know, Tony, myself, and probably one other.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, both Deputy Mayor Lavender, Brendan.
Right, somebody from the committee, or depending, you know, if there's an environmental concern, then, you know, you'd probably step in.
Sure.
So we're going to kind of just take it as they come along, hopefully, they come along.
Good, thank you. And then I have, we still have the SOP, I believe Dennis is still working on the standard operating procedure, so we'll get an update next meeting on that. Okay, good. The only last new business is just to remind folks, you should have gotten an email on financial disclosures, so please don't wait till the last minute to get those in by the end of April, or else you'll have Megan and Deb after you.
When's the first round?
I try to stay out of it, but, yeah, Megan. I don't need that responsibility.
First round of reminders will be coming out soon, right?
Exactly.
Deb, are you notified once we complete the application to the submission?
No, only Megan has that information.
Okay, but she does, she does get it once it's.
She does.
Okay.
She was the one, once everybody completes it.
We don't have to send her anything.
Great, good.
What is the due date for that?
The 30th.
Of April?
Don, I think there's training, too, that Megan sent out, right?
Yes, HR training for commitmen, for chairman and vice chairman, and probably the same for the zoning board, so I've already completed mine. And I did let Randy know that I had completed it.
Yeah, that was only for chairmans and vice chairmans.
Correct.
Okay.
Good, no, thank you for that reminder.
Right, and, you know, just as a reminder, I mean, that is mentioned in the NJLM guidelines, and, you know, I think over time, we may phase in the entire planning board and entire zoning board, but thanks for stepping up.
Yep, fantastic. Thank you. Good, anything else, if anybody else has? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fantastic, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.